Okay, thank you very much. This is gonna sound very similar for those of you who were here for the school board candidates, but good evening and thanks again. Welcome everybody. Thanks for coming out tonight. It's obviously very important to hear the candidates speak about the issue. My name's Guy Walker. I'm the 2017 Chairman of the Board of the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. And we're here tonight. Now we're ready for the Salina's Day of Mission. Tonight's event is sponsored by the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce and the Salina League of Women Voters. And I wanted to also extend a big thank you to Matt Thompson and the Kansas Wesleyan staff for getting us set up and hosting the event. The Chamber of League of Women Voters has made available printed profiles on all of the candidates. These are available in the back of the room, at the Chamber office, on the Chamber's website at salinahampus.org, on the League's website at lwsalina.org, the county clerk's office in the Salina Public Library. And I think we are ready to get started. The other thing I wanted to mention is for those of you who haven't been back, I said a minute ago we might think about moving forward. Evidently it was difficult to hear over the air conditioners for first. So time to introduce the candidates. We are listed in alphabetical order. Sergeant Owen Frybarger, Frank Hampton, Joe Hay Jr., Melissa Rose Hodges, Mike Kopic, Aaron Householder, and Tracy Wiggert. And now it's time for Ann Zimmerman, and she'll go over with the League of Women Voters. She'll go over the rules and format.
Thank you, Guy. I'm Ann Zimmerman. I'm the Vice President of the Salina League of Women Voters. We're glad you're all here. Let me review the format. We'll have one-minute opening remarks by each candidate. We alternate who starts. That'll be the first person to answer the opening remarks, and then we'll start with the next person to answer the first, give the first answer to the next question. And we'll alternate like that through the process. We'll first have questions from the media panel, and they'll be, they'll be giving their own questions. And after the media panel has given their questions for about half an hour or so, got the answers, then we switch to questions from the audience, which I hope you'll be writing now as you think of them. When you get a question, you can write it on a pad of paper, put it there on your chairs, and hold them up. Somebody will come around to pick them up. And they'll be taken up here to the screening panel, who screens them for legibility and for repetition, and they'll also check to make sure that they pertain to all of the candidates. The candidates will have one minute to answer each question, and the League of Women Voters has timers here in the front row. The green card that Margaret holds up will be, that means go, green, and the yellow one will come. You only have 20 seconds left, 20 seconds. Then the red one is when you stop, and Bruce White enforces the red card. Okay, and then after that, we'll have one-minute closing remarks by the candidates. So let's get started, and we'll start with Owen Frybarger, who are turn to make the opening statements.
Good evening. My name's Owen Frybarger, and I've lived in Salina for five years now. I go to New Portia. I then went to high school in Woodland, Kansas, and traveled all over the world and worked there most of my life as being in the state, in the state development. So I've also worked in many communities in Kansas on big projects, such as facing the Salina right now. I currently serve as City of Salina on, this is now on two business actually. I am on the Planning Commission, and I've just been in Chair by Commission for two years. I now the Vice Chair and reappoint for another third year. I also have been serving as liaison to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the last three years. So I have reviewed a lot of things going on in Salina, and I'm very familiar with the work here, and also have the very first chance on what I think should happen in the future.
Frank.
Yeah, I'm Frank Hampton. I do want to start off by thanking the Chamber, the League of Women Voters, and also Kansas Wesleyan for hosting us here tonight. I also want to thank all of you for coming, but especially my wife Izzy. She's, she's most of the way back there. Izzy and I, I grew up in Salina. We moved back here with our sons. We moved back here with our sons in 2003, so we've been here for about 14 and a half years. And during that time, I love Salina. There's a lot of great qualities, as opposed to living in DC, it's much better traffic patterns, there's a lot of good things. But it really is a wonderful place. We've got a lot of, we've got a lot of good things that are happening, we've got good things that are going to happen. And I think it's an exciting time to be in Salina, and I think that we just need to make sure that we can attract and retain individuals, families, and businesses to our community.
General.
Hi, my name is Joe Hay. I've lived in Salina now for almost 50 years, and I love Salina. I have a beautiful wife, Mary, of 44 years. I got four children, 14 great-grandkids, 14 grandchildren, two great-grandchildren, one old lady, and I've got one grandchild in heaven. I'm currently the Director of Maintenance at Sacred Heart Junior Senior High School. I'm an active in the community as a member of the 2020 Vision Committee, also a member of the Knights of Columbus, and serve as Grand High St. Mary's Council, and also a member of the Salina Ambus. I also served as President and Parish Council at St. Mary's and Sacred Heart, and I've been a scouter for going on 50 years of experiencing the council and the district.
Melissa. Thank you to the Salina League of Women Voters, the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce, to access television, for being here to film tonight, and to Kansas Wesleyan, my alma mater, for being such gracious hosts. Thanks for having Salina have these important conversations. I'm a lifelong Salina. My husband Boo and I chose to return home to raise our family and to be close to our parents. I love this community and the people in it. But today, over 20% of Salina children live below the poverty line. The poverty line, for those of you who don't know, for a household before is under $25,000 a year for a family of four. Half of our children are qualified with free lunches. Our median household income of $44,000 is $8,000 below the state average. Since 2012, our population has declined by over 5700 citizens. Increasingly, our sons and daughters, like our own, are seeking opportunities outside Salina. My pledge to you, the taxpayers.
Mike.
Thank you. I like to always get off on the right foot. So first of all, I'd like to thank my wife Polly, of 38 years, for supporting me in this endeavor, as many of you know is a time-consuming endeavor and not always an easy one. We have lived in Salina for 38 years. We have raised three children in Salina that have gone through USD 305. I proudly say that two of those children have moved back to Salina. My son went to work with me about two years ago. My daughter is in the school district along with her husband. I have 20 years of banking experience, and that's what brought me to Salina after college. And I think that will help me to analyze the financial issues that the city deals with. I also am currently a small business owner and believe I understand the concerns of the current employers and employees. If elected, I will serve following the three Cs: communication, cooperation, and compromise. I think we lack that some in the past, and I'll bring that to the office.
Eric.
My name's Aaron Householder. I was your Commissioner for four years previously. Your marriage won. I'm glad to see that I'm not doing with the doom and gloom stuff tonight. I hope the questions will be pointed. I think this is a very serious election, a very serious time for our community. Melissa, again, Ms. Hodges gave you some statistics. I hope we'll cover some more of those tonight as we go on to give you a reality of what we're dealing with. I'll do my best to try and stay calm about it, but it's very frustrating to watch, as she said, 20% of our, our community lives below the poverty level. Four out of five mothers with child below, eight to five with the poverty level. We're losing population. We're growing infrastructure. Our population is aging. We aren't doing the kind of things we need to do to keep people in this community. So I'm going to continue with some of the things I started along with my fellow Commissioners a few years ago, and we're going to see those through. Other people have had 30 or 40 years to try their plan for Salina. I want to see our plan go all the way through. I think it's going to work out. I'm working to see the results.
Tracy.
Hello, I'm Tracy Wiggert. I'm running for City Commissioner. Salina is the crossroads of America. As such, we are ideally placed for the manufacturing and transportation industries. We have the first-rate airport, and most importantly, a fine and willing workforce. When you elect me as City Commissioner, I would seek enthusiastic offers to invest in our community. Everyone has an idea, but we must find outstanding ideas, for outstanding ideas are the key to that common prosperity. I seek your contributions, I seek your influence, and most of all, I seek to address.
Thank you. Guy?
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to the media panel now. We have Sharon Montag with Salina Journal and Todd Pinter with Rockin' Radio. And we'll start with Todd this time, and the first person to answer will be Frank. Salina County owns the buildings. The City of Salina owns the land, so they are the landlord of the buildings that sit across the street from Tony's Pizza and Events Center. I'm talking about the Salina County Expo Center. That lease will soon be, what happens?
Well, I think what needs to happen is the city and the county have gone back and forth on this, but I think what they, I think there's been too much, there's been too much talking and not enough to listen. I think that reasonable people should be able to sit down and come up with, with an idea of the capital improvements that the county wants to put forward on that facility, and in exchange, a long-term lease of an appropriate length can be made by the city. It's impossible for them to make that type of a commitment though without a long-term lease, so I think it's just a matter of sitting behind the table.
Okay. Joe.
I think the city needs to step up and give the county a new lease, so that the existing structures can be upgraded. The county will not spend any money on a short-term lease. One thing we gotta remember is the taxpayers of Salina and Salina County cannot afford another multimillion-dollar project to build an expo center in another location.
Melissa.
Thank you. Since my appointment in January, the City Commission and the County Commission had two meetings and we have a third scheduled. I would disagree with Frank just a little bit in that I think this is an extremely important conversation for our city to have. What's the expo site going to look like in 50 years? We have a Big River renovation that's on tap. We just renovated Tony's Pizza and Events Center. And even though my wife is my favorite cowboy in the whole wide world, I can't agree to a 50-year lease or 20, even a 25-year lease when we're talking about a $2 million investment. I'm very hopeful that the City Commission can show the County Commission at our next meeting exactly the kind of development that we'd like to see happen at the Expo Center, but we're getting close to it.
Mike.
Yes, first of all, I do agree with Joe in the fact that we cannot afford to have another multimillion-dollar facility here in the community. I do believe we need to have those conversations with the county that have started and continue those. I think maybe we need to think a little bit outside the box. I think there's a possibility that the county doesn't bond, that maybe the city does the improvements through bonding and adds that improvement cost back to their lease. Also, we currently have a building authority that the city and county share with our city-county building. Maybe we need to look at possibly a park authority that is represented by city, county, and individuals from the community. I am somewhat disappointed that when the city spent 13-plus million dollars on the Tony's Events Pizza Center, which is hard to say still, that we didn't talk to the county and see what they needed, and that we looked to work with them at the same time to create a facility that would serve all of Salina and Salina County.
I actually attended that meeting with city and county here recently. It was what they had to say. I thought that, I was very impressed with what the County Commissioners had come up with. I think their costs were extremely reasonable. It's very easy for costs to get away when you're in government. Looking at their numbers, I thought they looked pretty good. They're, they're conscious of the fact of trying to make the facility, they're well aware we spent 13 or 14 million next door. They're conscious of the fact that they need to be a symbiotic sort of look to the bicentennial center. I think it'd be very easy to work with. I would encourage, I agree, 50 years is probably a little bit of a long time, but possibly a 20-year lease. And I concur, they're not going to put a bunch of money into it if they don't have a long-term lease. I think, I wish they would bond. I'd like to see it all done at one time. It wasn't a huge number, but those numbers do add up, and I think they were very reasonable. I think the County Commission seems very reasonable.
Tracy.
What's your big question, please?
Todd, your big question.
Yes, Salina County Expo Center. The City of Salina owns the land that it sits on. That lease is set to expire here very quickly. What becomes of it?
What becomes of it? Well, this is a tricky situation, so I can leave for building his garage on your property. You know, what do you do about it after it, you know, the term expires? Well, there's not much that I can do on this stuff. It's a legal matter. The city has, the county gets to do it, the city can win. But I do believe that we should provide space for both the people of the city and of the county. The old barns, the other, their light, light building, but they can be removed. But you know, what becomes of the property afterwards? Is it expanded to city parking for the Tony's Pizza Center or what? You know, this is where the public needs to put in, you know, what do you want to happen? It's not about our one. You know, this is your tax money, it's not mine. We have to.
Owen.
I think it's important that we remember that we are a rural community, and because of that, anything that's related should be a focus. I think living in town, we forget that there still are people that are involved in all kinds of activities that are related to the fairness and that sort of thing. I have trouble understanding why it can't be resolved, and I don't sit on the body, so I can't answer that question. I'm the very studious person who wants all of the information. We have an incredible staff at the City of Salina who supplies with those things before we make decisions. So I would need to know exactly what the dollars were, what the cost was, what the real time frame was. I agree with Ms. Hodges in that 50 years is too long. We do have plans for the possibility of another sitter, and I'm not going to discount that happening. In fact, in our planning process right now, we have a community that are located nowhere, and we're making decisions now that are affected by the fact that there may be a building there later. So I'm not going to discount that, but I would need to hear more and hear more dialogue about the subject.
Okay, now we'll go to a question from Sharon, and the first person to answer will be Joe.
How would you feel about the city adding to its personnel policy protection from discrimination based on gender identity and sexual orientation?
I think it needs to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. I think they need to, the city needs to look at, you know, nobody needs to be discriminated against. We all have rights, and the rights need to be protected. And if something needs to be put into the, you know, into the city for that, then I think that, you know, we need to take a look at that.
Melissa.
I just want to make it very, very clear that I am against discrimination in any form, against any person for any reason. The City of Salina should be a leader in positive organizational culture, but we're not. As an employer, our own employees lack protections that K-State Polytechnic, Union Medical School, Kansas Wesleyan, Salina Regional, and Salina Tech all provide. Statewide, we are behind Manhattan, Kansas City, and Lawrence. All I know is that when our son Ted went into cardiac arrest, and I was performing CPR on the floor of our family room, when Greg Brookway and his team of EMTs burst through the door, the last thing that was on my mind was their sexual orientation. We need to reward competent, hardworking people. We need to embrace diversity.
Mike.
Well, I know this is before the Commission happened, and there's a good chance this will be taken care of before any of us up here in our office. I think I agree with the prior to you, that no one should be discriminated against for any reason. I do question a little bit as to why the city is moving forward on this when the city as a whole voted against this several years ago. If it is an issue, maybe it's something that needs to be addressed at the city level again. One of the things, and you know, I'm 100% up on this, is I've got sat in meetings with the Commission, is there's the potential for additional expense to the taxpayer as there would need to be changes made to restrooms and facilities, so those would perhaps have to be something that would have to be discussed also.
Aaron.
I know Melissa didn't mention it, but I know Melissa and I both received the endorsement of equality in Kansas because of our support for, really, rights for everybody. It's not just about LGGD, it's about all our citizens, and I, I don't think it's worth the, I, I think Melissa said it as good as anybody can, and I'll take a second to her, to her, her win of that debate question, because I think she said it as good as anybody can say it.
Tracy.
I took a practice statement I made earlier, that it was a separate issue where the county sued the city. It wasn't about the Tony's Center with the old barns. About social engineering, I think it's a very, very slippery slope when a very small percentage of the population controls different actions. And as I, I don't want to see people hurt, I don't want to see people discriminated against, but yet we have to balance the equation on a percentage of who's being affected and who's someone that's.
Owen.
This is an issue that, again, I have some trouble with. I don't even know if it's relevant, because I can't really believe that it would happen in our community. I am very optimistic this is here, and I know many of the people on staff, and I believe that if we had these issues, they would be brought to light and they'd be dealt with appropriately. I also question why this is coming up now and why it's happening so quickly. I think to rush a discussion like this that has already been a topic of interest in this community, and that precedes me, because I arrived during that discussion five years ago, I think to rush it now without dialogue, without engagement, without reasoning, without substantiation from human resource departments on information, would be doing a disaster. We really need to look closer before we make some kind of decision, but we should never discriminate.
I think by going to follow up his remarks, I think discrimination, we've got to be against that. People have rights, as everyone up here has said, but, but I would like to know a little bit more. I know that during the discussion, J.C. Gage said that he needed to go meet with employees and employee groups and discuss this issue with them. And then there's also, was brought up earlier, what is the cost of this? Not, not to mention the challenge that you probably could not even make changes within the city and county building because of differences with the county. So it's one where I would need, I would need further information. It's one where we'll see what the, what the cost figures are to make the accommodation changes, but it's, it's one that I would, I would like to have more information on.
Okay. Thank you. We're back to Todd, and this, the question will be answered first by Melissa.
I want to hear your thoughts on the revitalization of downtown Salina. The Field House is up and running. Streetscape is under consideration right now. That's being discussed. What are your thoughts on how aggressive or not aggressive do they need to be?
I'm sorry, could I ask for clarification real quick?
Your, your vision of the Salina Downtown expansion, Salina Downtown expansion?
I'm sorry, how aggressive?
How aggressive do we need to be?
Okay, well, I'll take a shot at this. As you know, I was Director of Salina Downtown for a couple of years, and I could not be more excited to see the downtown revitalization that is taking place. The Field House is a tremendous start to what I think is going to be a really transformative project for downtown. Hopefully, by the end of the month, we're going to be signing some transferring agreements, and we just completed a million-dollar Streetscape plan. My only concern is that I feel like we need to be committed, if we're going to do it right, we really need to make sure that we have the resources and our, our bond financing in place to do it right. We're only going to have the chance to do this once, and let's knock it out of the park for future generations.
Mike.
Sort of known as Salina County for several years, and the downtown business owner, and very excited about what's going on. If you've ever driven individuals around that were looking to move to your community as I have done, one of the things I always want to see is your downtown. The Field House is a great first step, and again, we are so lucky as a community to have the private sector that has stepped up and willing to help fund the Field House, to build a hotel, to do a car museum. We are a blessed community with that. I believe that we, we also talk about some infill redevelopment. I do believe that the downtown is, when it's completed, will help bring individuals down to those areas. If you look at the P&amp;L District of Kansas City, it was a blighted area. Once they did that, people wanted to move into that area. So I think the important thing is we do the downtown correctly. We must support those merchants also during the construction, but we must build on that environment.
I've been an advocate for downtown. Our areas have changed for a long time, including North Salina and other ways. When I first got into office, I began sending things with my fellow Commissioners into place to make the midtown area more investment-worthy. I think it can be done organically, a lot better, and a lot more long-term than what we're looking at right now. We have an organization who has never done a project like this before, and they're wanting, and you guys need to pay close attention to these numbers, they're wanting us to bond for $6 million extra dollars, that the bond councils won't even back. So the people who make investments in this won't even back, and they're going to tell you, you need to stand up for your city, you need to take a chance, you need to take a chance, on and on and on. I don't see enough things in this downtown project as proposed to make it a worthwhile risk for the taxpayers. Again, I'm a huge advocate for downtown and small local businesses, they're the backbone of our community truly, for the long-term, but the plan that's currently exist is a lot of money, a lot of fluff.
Tracy.
Again, this is your time to work. How will it be spared? Will it be most profitable to be the father's empathetic, or will it be more, would it be better to take investment into the community? And domestic industries move to Salina, you know, our businesses are major principal businesses are reaching their review term. And they're going to have to decide if they're going to rebuild or if they want to move. If they move, then it's going to be a devastating strike to the City of Salina. So we have to figure out a way to match taxation to benefit the entire community while here is Salina's job. That's pretty much it.
Owen.
A lot of items come to both the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board regarding downtown, and we've made many decisions in the last three years. We are always looking at what will be 30 years from now, not today, when we make those decisions and accept or reject an agenda. I am, I'm very much a supportive actor downtown, I just moved my office down to the center of it, so I obviously support it. However, I don't think all the components are in place, and I was a PRJ in that process, but there's some vital components that I think are missing. We have a demographic group that's very specific here. We know what the trend is in the future. I'm not going to accept that we're going to have a lot of new people when we know, Ms. Hodges said that that isn't happening. I think we need to address housing downtown, and we need to address an aging population, and wonder if they will actually use that as activity and entertainment.
Frank.
Well, I think the Field House has been a great start, and I think the downtown project, there's very large private commitments, and I think it will be quite beneficial to us as a community to retain and attract individuals, families to this community to, to move forward with the downtown project. I'd also point out, there's been, one of the things that's also gone in downtown, and it's going to open up probably in about eight or nine months, done completely with private funds, is about a $10 million renovation of a big building that it was sitting at, and it's going to be the KU Med Center in half, the nursing school, which has just started, is going to be over there. That's a tremendous opportunity. We're the smallest county in the country with our own medical. Big things should be happening downtown, and I think they will.
Joe.
I say, you know, when you say aggressive, I say let's don't drag this project out. You know, we have businesses downtown, it's going to have the streets tore up, they need to keep their doors open, they need to make their money, so we don't want to drag it out too long. too long. You have to have a nice vibe in downtown if you want people to move here and work in Salina. They need to feel welcome. With the current Streetscape plan, Salina Downtown will be that place. As a member of the Salina 2020 Vision Committee, I'm proud to say I can, I'm trying to help make this happen.
Okay, thank you all. Let's see, we're back to Sharon, and the first person to answer is Tony Michael.
What are your thoughts about the roles of the Salina Community Economic Development Organization and the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce?
Thank you, Sharon. I did sit in on the group when we were forming the E D O, as a member of the Salina Airport Authority as the chairman at the minute. There's been different matrix to set up. The E D O is there to help bring in new business. The Chamber of Commerce was at that time giving the matrix to look at the expansion of current businesses and workforce development. As I stated earlier, in one of the things, the questionnaires asked by the chamber, right now, Salina is basically at 100% employment. We need to find a way, and again, we need to work as a group with the city, the county, the chamber, the E D O, to find a qualified workforce to bring in with the community. I've been out talking to different businesses, and we could bring 200 to 400 people to Salina tomorrow if we could find it. This is not a Salina problem, but this is a nationwide problem.
Eric?
When I was on the commission, we fired the Chamber of Commerce because they handled 30 years of our economic development. Their idea of economic development was bringing low-wage jobs, fast food restaurants, and keeping large employers who pay real wages away. We gave them two years to get their act together, they didn't, so we fired them. That's why we have, I've got notes up here for you, I don't try and bore you too much with what's going on here. Low wages mean high divorce rates, high divorce rates mean single-family households, single-family households, meaning kids hanging up in the penal system. And we, we've got to bring in competition. We've set up that economic development to not be beholden to anyone else, not be beholden to its members, and to be able to just operate independently and bring in the kind of jobs that we want. You know, one thing we could do here is an idea about getting some employees back. How are all the people that work out of town because they paid our wages, how have been those working in the first and driving here and staying here? It's because the Chamber of Commerce had nothing to get wages off while they were here, and that was why those people are working in other towns, and we're going to try and bring them back with us, the E D O.
Tracy?
I would like to ask you a question, please.
What are your thoughts about the roles and effectiveness of the Salina Community Economic Development Organization and the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce?
I do know that for the last, I lived in Salina for about 40 years, and it's just the status quo. You know, the same industry, the mom and pops they grow, they're prospering and dying. What can we do to bring another major industry to the city? You know, is it the responsibility of a contract organization, who's really responsible for this? It's not just the board, it's just not me, it's everybody, you know? You got an idea, bring it forward, come to the city of your nation, speak your mind. You know, we can't come up with a ready answer by ourselves.
Owen?
Both organizations have been working in vital role in the community of Salina. I've always been heavily involved in chamber activities, I was a chamber ambassador for years in Goodland, so we kind of all were there, and it was during the boom, so everything's good. However, I'm very concerned that either the chamber and economic development organization is run improperly, officially, or that they use their funds appropriately. This would be my question. I need to see impact, especially from the E D O. I need to know that we have market presence, that everyone out there knows Salina is reliable, that it is sustainable, and that we have options, and they're attractive for new players and new people. I don't see enough of that out of these particular organizations, and I have been working towards that, so I'll continue to support them.
Frank?
Well, I do think that we have a challenge right now. When you look at the last unemployment report for Salina that I saw, and it was 3.1%. And with an unemployment report of 3.1%, it's going to be very difficult to get new business to come to Salina, especially if they are a large employer. And I would, I would point out a few things. One, the real opportunities are with the expansion of our current workforce, Shwans increased wages, I think it was $2 across four, three and a half for nighttime. I've got a son who works at Exile, they don't have near enough people on the night shift, and so he's working 60 hours every week. The fact is, there are, there are job openings in this community, they are available, and yes, we do have people who drive in and in first, there's other people who drive to Salina from Minneapolis, Tescot, and everywhere else. The situation is, is going to be one where the best way forward is going to be it.
Joe?
You know, we need jobs, we need better-paying jobs. We must promote an economic climate in Salina and Salina County that attracts new businesses and industries and supports our local businesses, so they can expand and not fail. We need to limit city government from limiting restrictions and regulations that hamper its economic growth in our community, and we must be aggressive and compete for new business. My question to the E D O is, when Raytheon moved out of town and we lost all those 300 plus jobs, what have we done to get those back? A lot of those people went to the first and to get a better-paying job. We need to get those people back. It really happened in Salina, I think Melissa was still here, and we need to find a way to get that workforce back.
Melissa?
Thank you. As the chamber, as the city commission's liaison to the new Economic Development Organization, which we call P D O for short, I'm in a really good position to make sure that this new organization gets off to a very strong start. We have a three-year contract with the Economic Development Organization, began in 2016, and it will expire in 2018. I think that we need to devote the resources that we need to do to make this a successful organization. I see the chamber playing a more supportive role when it comes to economic development, in that I see the chamber as serving more as an ambassador organization, doing things like chamber active hours or cutting words and things like that. But past emphasis, or past emphasis on low wages makes Salina a community of working poor, and we've got a lot of work ahead of us to change that concept.
Okay, thank you very much. It's time to move to questions from the audience, and I will present my next question.
Well, we have about 18 questions, we have about time for seven or eight, so.
All right.
I've kind of combined a few, and we'll see how this goes. And remind me who started this one, dear. Okay, okay. Where and how do you believe the city commission can encourage economic development? I know I didn't talk about this.
Well, I mean, again, that was all, all part of when I was, when I was on the commission. One thing we've got to do is get our taxes, and everybody knows that I'm an advocate for using what we've got first, making the best use of our existing infrastructure before we add on. If you have such high taxes where a business can't come to Salina, they're not going to relocate here. But let's say we give a tax break to a big corporation. What happens to the small businesses? They have to take up the slack. I have a small studio building on State Street, feel free to drive by anytime you want. My property tax is $4,000 a year on that. How can I rent that to somebody to start the next Shwans, or the next cabinet company, or the next thing, when the, when the taxes are so high? A good example was Mocus Downtown. I think at one time they were looking at $4,000 rent, and I thought, yeah, that seems awfully high, so I looked at it, 1,500 of it was property tax. How are we going to get new businesses when our taxes are that high? And if we keep giving tax breaks to the big ones, then our small businesses fail, and those are the ones that we make the most money with, is our, is our local, small businesses.
Casey? That's a tricky question. How do you market the city of Salina? Do you target advertisers and national newspapers? Took that position on the Merck, took that NASDAQ, whatever, to try to influence corporations to start or move to Salina, Kansas. These are simple marketing ideas, but I don't think they've ever been addressed before. Shoot a straight deal, you know, maybe five years tax-free for permanent investment in the city of Salina. Now, these are all good ideas, and they should be pursued. What I do know is, the population hasn't expanded in the city, I know that salaries haven't increased drastically, we're doing a great job with education, but where are these educated people going to find employment? Are we going to hand out money just so they can live in the city of Salina, or are we going to encourage them to move out?
None of these topics are actually initiated by either the commission or the planning commission that brought to us, so it's hard to say how can the city commission do that, because I don't really feel like that's something the city commission necessarily does. They react and respond to requests that they get. So, how do they do that? By having a body of people that can respond to those requests in a way that will increase economic development in Salina. It's by choosing the right people for the position, you know? We need to have people who are savvy financially, but you also have to have the visionaries, like those of us that do planning in the future. You combine the whole, they collaborate, and then they can respond and answer to requests that would actually help us in the long-term and the future.
Frank?
Yeah, collaboration was actually where I was going at the end of the last economic development answer, that with the Salina Chamber, with the E D O, with the city, with the county, with the Salina Airport Authority, you know, with all involved entities, the process is, it's worth the work best when everybody's working together. And that is something that we're going to need to do going forward, everybody has a valuable role, and, you know, economic development, again, like I said, workforce development and expansion or retention of your, of your existing businesses is going to be where we're going to get the most bang for our buck here going forward, at least in the near term, because that's, you know, all different partners, the workforce, we mentioned Salina Tech, there's some good things, there's some good things happening out there, and we need to keep promoting that.
Joe?
I really see the commission needing to work closely with the E D O. We just, the commission or the city just hired a new economic development person. Really haven't seen much out of that person, really haven't seen much in the news about, you know, any new jobs coming to Salina, any new businesses coming to Salina, you know? Right now, I'm ready to ask for my money back, that we're paying that gentleman because of movement, we're not really much getting out there. We really need to work closely, and we really need, if we're going to make this work, we're going to have to work with that, with that commission.
Melissa?
I would like to point out that we contracted for economic development with the Chamber of Commerce from the 1950s on, and invested as much as $200,000 here in, in that organization without producing much measurable results, so I'd really like to give the E D O longer than 18 months. But something I'd like to emphasize is that economic incentives must be tied to outcomes, and they must produce measurable results. We can't force incentivize businesses that do not meet certain thresholds like wages. I want to give a huge shout-out to Shwans Global for their commitment in adding $5 million to their payroll. They've been a great community partner, and I hope that we, by their example, other businesses will follow.
Mike?
Well, can you, there you go. We're going to talk about perception versus facts for a minute here. I did serve as the chamber president, I have talked to the last of the nine, so I've talked to the 10 of us that were chamber presidents the last 10 years, and never once have we approached by local businesses to keep wages down or to keep businesses out. I have sat in the war room and we're trying to bring economic development to Salina, and I can tell you, it's not easy. Some of the reasons that we were turned down were, we did not have a direct flight from their headquarters into Salina. We have a rail that runs directly through the middle of our town, and they did not like the railroad running through Fourth Street with their products. We lost out to one because they had a short line that paid $1 million to put a spur in, and we were in the top three there. We have a shortage of workforce, again, who's coming here when they don't have workers? You look at Topeka, they, they got the new M and M's Mars facility, 200 employees, they paid $6 million to the city, we know how to do that as a community.
The next question, just going to have a little change of subject here, you know, there are many more questions on that topic. This says, images recycling is to close to make way for the car museum. The city has proposed several alternatives for both trash collection and recycling. What's your opinion about trash collection and recycling, in which way do you favor? Tracy?
I could be on that committee, and we, the committee sat on a questionnaire, said, which would you like better, a $4 increase in your trash fees, or would you like a $5 increase? So I objected to that, because it's kind of a hardcore manipulation to force a program that honestly, I don't think there's going to be any benefit to it, because we're going to have to truck recyclable trash to the person where Topeka, and if the small volume is going to be moved, it won't have a lasting effect for reducing the landfill volume. So I asked the commission, you know, what's, what cost, what savings are we going to have by recycling? Is it going to reduce the fill into the landfill? Is it, what volume, what cost are we going to save? And that's, two months from now, we're supposed to have a report coming out, but I don't think it's going to be beneficial.
Owen?
I lived in Berkeley, California, I lived in New York, where they actually ticked you, of course, if you didn't put the things in the recycling basket under your house, and that was years ago, 20. So, we have a prudent responsibility to be good stewards of this earth, and for that reason, it's recycling. I recall that I still can't get a recycling box for my house on Highland. I'm also bothered by the fact that trash collection is so unorganized, but yet well-performed, but we look at this at the planning level of the future in terms of neighborhood development, suburban buildings, what we should do to make trash collection work, and it becomes problematic for all of us on that level of planning too. So there are a lot of reasons to consider a new option, but in terms of recycling, I would say that it needs to be definitely a major component in any trash program here.
Frank?
Well, I think we, I think we should consider it, but I go back to questions that I have, just how much recycling is currently going on, even where we have, where we had been using images and where other people have been using images here in Salina. And relative to the amount of recycling going forward, what is the net benefit of that relative to the cost, both monetary cost and environmental cost of trucking all of that recyclable material 65, 100 miles away? It's one that I think that there are both environmental benefits of that recycling, and there's probably going to be some real costs, monetary and environmental.
Joe?
Recycle, recycle, recycle. That's what my wife would want me to say, but I tell you what, she's very, very religious about, when those bins get full on the back porch, she heads down to images to dump those bins. So recycling is a big part of our family, and it should be a big part of this community. The more we recycle, like I said, it's, it's a benefit for Salina to recycle.
Melissa?
Just to bring everybody up to speed, in case you don't know, we are looking, the city is looking at going to a fully automated trash pickup service. The reason that we're looking at moving to automation is because right now, it takes three workers to stack a city trash truck. We have two workers and one driver. These are dirty, dangerous, difficult jobs that don't pay particularly well, and we can't keep them filled. We have lots of injuries to workers. By switching to automation, it will require fewer workers, we will add a fifth route, and we'll be able to, to handle that without, without having to have as much risk to the workers. We're also talking about requiring all carriers to do recycling, which I am very much in favor of as well. We need to recycle.
Mike?
Yes, I'm fortunate in the fact that the neighborhood I live in does have a curbside pickup for recycling. I do want my trash picked up on a weekly basis, mainly during the summer, obviously, but we, again, maybe we need to think outside the box. I would like to see more curbside pickups for recycling, as I think that if we're looking at the long-term, looking at our environment, that's something we really need to address. But recycling, maybe we can do that twice a month, maybe it becomes once a month. But recycling, maybe we can do that twice a month, maybe it becomes once a month to help save costs to the city. So again, those are the types of things we need to look at. We also need to educate the public. Again, a lot of us sitting in this room understand how important it is, but there's a certain demographics out there that probably does not understand how it's going to affect us and our, the future generations. So education, again, I believe is a very important part of this.
Aaron.
I was on the commission when we started looking at this and I was a big supporter of recycling. However, we do it, I expense, as you hear me out here talking all the time, it's very important. But I think the least we could do is, as I think maybe Owen said, is pass on at least a little bit of a green earth and maybe we can start a bit, so work a little harder.
Thank you. Next question, we'll go to Owen. How do you address homelessness in Salina?
This is a great question because I recently was closing and my client said to me, "What are you going to do with a five-point plan if we're going to open your commission? On what are you going to do about the homeless?" I said, "Excuse me? What do you mean by that?" And they said, "Well, what are you going to do with your...?" I said, "A, we're compassionate people, we're caring, we're loving people, this is why in Kansas we eliminate those that we don't like or those that are unfriendly." This is not a subject that I like to talk about within a kind of levity of brevity because it's very, very important. There are underserved people everywhere and even in the city, they need the same services that we all have and they need the same opportunities. So we need to educate the community as well as the people that need served and really work to incorporate them into the fabric of this community better.
Frank.
Well, yeah, I think that Salina is a very generous community and I think that whether, you know, the emergency food bank or Ashby House or any of that. Salvation Army, there's so many groups out there that do very good things and benefit from the people of Salina who are so generous and they are caring and those dollars go towards at least benefiting people who are homeless or in a difficult situation or a single mother. And so again, I think that our community just keeps giving and I'm sure that they will continue to do so in the future.
Tim.
I also think our community is a very compassionate community, you know, with the Ashby House, with the Rescue Mission, with the Salvation Army. Like I said, education is a big part of that. We need to work close with those organizations and also with the food bank and different other organizations to be able to guide, you know, these folks with the help that they need. And so I hope that's one way that we can, we can look at that problem.
Melissa. When I was at Salina downtown, I became aware of Salina's homeless problem. And naively, I didn't think we had a homeless problem. But at any given time in downtown Salina and by the river, we probably have a dozen people that are sleeping rough. I got together a group of people with representatives from Ashby House, the Rescue Mission, the Police Department, Feed the Hungry. It is a, it is a problem that has to do with our location at the intersection of I-135 and I-70. It has to do oddly enough with the excellent social services that we do provide. The homeless know that they can get service here. It's a, it's a very difficult problem and one of the things that I'm happy came out of that is there's now a 211 app. You can dial 211 and get updates on services and hopefully that will help us help other people. Mike.
Yeah, I believe part of our problem maybe does come from the fact that we are a compassionate, caring community. And we have individuals that come here and go to the mission and the mission for their own reasons has certain rules that those individuals have to abide by. What happens is those people do not abide by those rules and they have nowhere to go. So that's therefore become us living on the street. Part of our issue, and it's a federal issue, not something that the commission can deal with, is we've cut funding back on a lot of programs that deal with those that have mental illness. And so they really don't have a place to go that they may have, you know, 20 years ago. I think we do have to work with our United Way agencies, the state of Kansas, the police department to try and figure out how to do this. I do believe that legally, we only have a certain amount of things that we can do as far as helping those individuals. So I think what we have to do is reach out to the organizations that are used to working with them.
Aaron.
I think most of the candidates have said exactly the reasons that we have them and the solutions that we have in place. The scary thing is, as I mentioned earlier, 20% of our population is living below the poverty level. You know, how many more higher taxes or fixed costs do we add then before we increase the amount of people who can no longer afford to live in homes? We create our own batch of homeless versus those that are coming in from other communities. That's a big concern to me. But I think we do have plenty of social organizations in town to try and help them. We have to keep in mind that some of those people don't want any help. I go to coffee in the morning down at Askren, there's a gentleman that comes in there every few days and stays. I don't think he's interested in going to a homeless state in there. So we have to kind of work with each of those individuals. Some of them don't want to be housed, some of them, you know, don't really want the help. So we have to be respectful, kind of wish us too, we are very limited legally what we can do for those people.
Tracy.
That's a difficult question. You know, we have opportunity to sign a rescue, Tony's will hire them for many jobs. But the problem is that mental facilities just aren't there and there's no real support system for these people in the city, county, or state. Or are they going to end up, what are they going to end up in county jail? There they will receive some mental health issues, psychological treatment. But once they're at the jail, what do they do? Do they have access to medicine, to regular community regime? We don't know. It's a hard question to answer. I'm going to be quite honest, I didn't have an answer for it. Talking about 10, 20 people in the town, should the city bill them for them? I don't know. What's the answer? You tell me.
Thank you. Frank, you're going to be the first one on this one. What should or can the city commission do to help shape a sustainable Salina and including combating or adapting to climate change?
You know, that, that is a point that I have not really thought about and it's one where I think that there are limitations. Keep in mind, you're a policymaking board, this is the city commission. And again, there are some other problems that have been referenced earlier, well earlier, with regard to with regard to what's, some of the differences in between us and other cities and states. Really anything on this is not, in my mind, have anything to do with the local level. That does not mean that we can't be good stewards and I know that recycling is something that has been discussed on where to move it now that the evidence in Salina is no longer available. But I would take a pass on the rest of that answer.
Thank you. Tim.
I think global warming and the way the climate change has been and the way we're seeing warmer temperatures through, you know, weather kinds and everything like that. It's, I really don't have an answer on what, you know, it's just like Frank said, you know, the commission is supposed to be a policy-setting board and, you know, I really don't have an answer for it.
Melissa. I know we've talked about, you know, making it easier to do business in Salina. We recently did a major overhaul of our codes. And one of the codes that we implemented is something called the I E C C. And I believe that stands for the International Energy Conservation Code. We got quite a bit of pushback on that, but I think that that is one way by promoting those codes and enforcing those codes that we can start to change the way people think. I also believe that when we do build new buildings and facilities, we need to take a long, hard look at pursuing LEED certification. And if the cost-benefit analysis works out, I think it's very important that we commit to those goals. Thank you. Mike.
Yeah, I believe, I follow kind of what Joe and Frank said. I'm not sure it's a policymaking board exactly how much effect we have on sustainability and as far as global warming goes. There are different issues that we can look at as far as sustainability within the community. And if those issues come before us, I think, as Melissa said, we look at ways to save energy costs. I mean, that's, that's being a good steward of the taxpayers' money as well as being thoughtful as far as global warming.
Thank you. Aaron.
Well, I think we can look at our own growth patterns of our city. I think the fact that we have grown 191% in size since 1960, yet only grown 10% in population. I know Mike likes to say occasionally that Salina hasn't grown a lot since he lived here. I wonder if he would be interested to know that the city of Salina actually has grown 31% in the last, since he moved here 38 years ago. So we're eating up a lot of natural resources out there. Our best farm ground right now is being eaten up with new roads, new infrastructure, that's long-term costs that we're passing on. And those are the things that we have to look for, for our future. So, yeah, we can easily cut down on our carbon footprint, if you will, stop laying in more streets, more roads, reutilize what we have. If it's something that economically makes sense, ecologically makes sense.
Thank you. Tracy.
Good question.
Let's see. What should or can the city commission do to help shape a sustainable Salina and combat or adapt to climate change?
Plant trees.
Thank you. Owen.
What the city can do is fully cooperate with the planning issues. I would guess this question came from my mind by the planners. We do take this into consideration in every single decision we make. We are assessed at the planning level with sustainability for Salina and correct use of the things that exist in this environment right now. What we need is more cooperation on that level of planning by having people attend our study sessions and our meetings. I think, I've heard all these things tonight about what we need to do to get economic development and all these people to come to Salina. I want to just say that the things they look at are smart growth principles. They want to see that we recycle, they want to see that we do all these things, they want to see that we use lean building techniques. They actually look at all those things before they ever consider living here. So in order to do what we all want to do, we do need to consider sustainability, it's very, very important.
Thank you.
Joe, you get to start this one. What do you see as the future for our mall and shopping? And is that a change that can help bring more people to our community?
Well, I think everybody really knows, the mall we got outside, you know, in South Salina is virtually dead. You know, we've lost, we've lost one anchor store, we're about to probably lose another anchor store. Malls are dying all over the United States for one reason, that's online shopping. A lot of people don't go to malls like they used to go to malls. I think a while back in the paper, you did see though, that there is a plan out there for the Central Mall to do some renovations and to try to make it more inviting to people, like making it, you know, like the legends in, of the Kansas City is. That's what it's going to take for that type of shopping. The other things for shopping is, like I said, we need to get this downtown going and get, you know, the businesses moving in downtown so we can shop downtown with it.
Melissa. I had the pleasure of speaking with Lisa McDowd a couple of weeks ago. Lisa is the general manager for the Central Mall. And I wanted to assure her that the city has the Central Mall's back. We are not in the business of ensuring that one business succeeds over another and having an empty mall doesn't do anything for our community. Lisa recognizes that we have a changing retail climate and she's got some very creative ideas of ways that we can reuse the mall and bring it back to life. And I just want to give a huge shout out to her because she's on it, she knows we have the Central Mall's back and I'm very hopeful with the exciting things to come.
You know, we have a very unique community with the interstate running through Salina, we have the retail to the south and we also have the downtown. So we are trying to keep two retail areas alive at the same time. I do believe that, again, malls are changing all over the country. My hope would be that as the city commissioner, we would work with them to make them successful. I look at the Midstate Mall, how many of us a few years ago thought that the Midstate Mall was going to go away and become low? They've done a wonderful job with that, it's completely occupied now. Again, I think we have businesses that want to come here. Everyone keeps saying how we go after the restaurants and have them come here. You've got to realize that most of those businesses in South Salina, including malls, come here because they want to be in this community. No one has gone after them, they have come here because they like what we have to offer, they like our location. So we're obviously doing something right as a community.
Aaron.
Well, malls have been dying for 10%, I believe, since the 90s. And I don't think there's been a new mall in the United States since 2009. I do understand that they are looking at doing some revamping of that and that's great and I hope it still has more local stores. You know, the local economy, the local stores, for every dollar you spend, this is something to think about next time you're buying from a national chain, for every dollar you spend in a local store, 48 cents stays in the community versus 17 cents from a Walmart or another big box store. And for restaurants, 68 cents at every dollar stays in this region of your community versus 30 cents from a chain. So I'd like to see it filled with more local stores. Maybe we should have put a filled house in there, I don't know, it's big enough, there's a lot of new spaces. But, but, you know, I'm encouraged by what they are planning to do out there and I wish it would, that was to give you a tough economic environment.
Tracy.
Well, the merchants, I mean, follows the salaries of the workers of the city. If you improve the workforce, you improve salaries, the merchants are going to naturally follow, they're going to be profitable. And they'll stay in the city's economy, they won't go bankrupt. So the, so the principle for this city is to bring in new industries, further have technology, smart people jobs. And, you know, this is high salaries, they'll spend locally.
Owen.
There's a combination of factors here and I want to speak about something that Mr. Hopkins said. I don't think people come here because they want to, they come here because of the numbers. There's a market need for their product. I mean, we hear it because they come to us and they design to, you plan for what they're going to do. They don't know anything about us, they don't care, they just know that it's such and such, there's so many cars to support their product. So we accommodate them because they purchased the product and they're going to do something. As far as the mall, it needs to be repurposed and there is speculation on how that's going to happen. And I think the plans for that could be very good, it needs to be broken up, it needs to be more freestanding, it needs to support the sort of foot traffic and the supportive activity that people like to do nowadays, which I think we're going there and I'm excited about that.
Yeah, I can go back to Mike's comments on the Midstate Mall, I was thinking that since it's been a long, that the repurposing of the Midstate, you know, where you've got these retailers and instead of doing an internal mall, it's all going in the other direction. And ultimately, the Central Mall, I think, will be repurposed. But do keep in mind, we have in Salina, we have the third highest pull factor in the state. And what that means is we have a lot of people who have come from out of town and spend money in Salina. And I think there's, you know, on Aaron's comments, I think there's probably lots of locals who like local establishments and local shopping. But I think there's a lot of people, maybe from north central Kansas, who drive 40, 50 miles, they go to the Walmart, they go to the Sam's Club and they go to one of the, they go to one of the big chain restaurants and that's what they did. And so I think we, there's room enough for both of them and I think that, don't underestimate our pull factor.
Okay, let's see, Melissa, you're starting this one. And the question is, what do you see as the role of the chamber? For several years, we have a lot of more funding from the city, do you think that should be influencing the city commission? What do you think your role is for the chamber and should it receive a little funding?
I think, as I said before, I think the chamber does serve a important role in our community. I think it's a great organization for networking, for supporting existing businesses, promoting existing businesses. That being said, I would prefer to see all of our economic development activities be consolidated with one entity, the EDO. It's important, my perspective is, if you're going to give public funds to an organization, that means you have public access. that means you have public access. So if we are going to partner with the Chamber on anything, we're going to need to make sure that we have open meetings and we have accountability.
Mike?
As far as funding the Chamber, I don't know. I haven't seen a proposal yet. But again, I think as Melissa said, if the Chamber comes to us, again, they're working with local businesses for expansion, they work with workforce development. If a proposal meets what the City Commission believes is necessary to help Salina move in the correct direction, then yes, I would do it. Again, I think you have to have measurable results, and we would require that to be done on an annual basis. As far as open meetings, I don't know if they're currently closed. I think, I don't, Chamber members can come. If they're receiving tax dollars, I believe that would probably be okay. Doesn't mean that they have an open mind, but I think they're more than welcome to probably come and listen to what's going on at the Chamber.
Aaron?
Well, I find it interesting that you would look at the situation and potentially go down, because when we presented you and other Chamber Board members with the results of the poor work that was being done on economic development, you all signed up and you thought it was just fine. So I think the Chamber of Commerce serves an important function. I think it works as a representative of the local businesses. You know, we may have a City Commission meeting to speed things along rather than have 500 businesses come to us and tell us their thoughts. They have their board president or their, whoever the Chamber employee is come in and represent and say, hey, I represent 550 local businesses or 10 businesses or whatever. And here's, here's what our business people think about this, should be a proposal. That's the job of the Chamber of Commerce. When you put the Chamber of Commerce with high-paying members who intend to keep wages low in charge of economic development, you're giving the keys to the henhouse to the fox. And that's why we fired the Chamber of Commerce. The work was subsanated, nothing was changed. In fact, they're having a hard time keeping their own jobs.
Tracy?
They receive public funds? Yes. Public should be able to access that information. If there's an objection, the funds will be withdrawn. Simple and true, to the point.
Owen?
I want to love the Chamber, and I am a member because I benefit. That's the only reason I'm a member. So no, I do not think the cost should be allocated across this entire city, even if a person was sitting here around. If you don't benefit, you don't want to pay for it. However, they have vital roles, so I'm not going to go back down on all that again. But I do believe that they can partner with the city in many, many ways. We can share space, we can share events, there are all kinds of ways. We can endorse things, we could possibly fund specific happenings that somehow are related to activity for all, not just for everyone. But again, I am a member of the Chamber because I benefit, but not everybody does.
Frank?
Well, again, I might, I might point out my way back around, the Chamber is not receiving any economic development funding since, I believe, February of 2014. So closing it on four years. Now, they continue, the Chamber continued to work on economic development. They, you know, they, it's, the Chamber, I disagree strongly with Aaron's characterization of the Chamber's role in what they did and that there was, and that the business community was in charge of the, it was, it was in charge of the, I forget the, I forget what he said on some, but it was guarding the henhouse. But the fact is, the Chamber's got great staff, they've got hardworking people, they do a great job collaborating with airport authority, EEO, and others who, who work on economic development. And I'm a big fan, and I was the chairman in 2015.
Joe?
I believe the Chamber is a vital part of the city of Salina. And the reason I say that is, number one, workforce development, helping, helping the workforce, you know, and betterment of that. I'm a member of the Chambers, the Chamber, the after-hours, the networking, the people you need. And just like Frank said, even though that the Chamber does not receive any funding for EEO, they're still working toward economic development. And they're, I do feel that they're a vital part of the city of Salina.
Thank you. Last question, I'm going to start with Mike. How can the City Commission influence employers to move toward paying truly living wages?
Legislatively, I'm not sure we can. Being a business owner, I'm not sure if the current City Commission came to me and asked me to pay my people more money. It becomes a matter of economics. Each job, I believe, in a community is worth a certain amount. I would love to pay all my people twice what they make, but economically, that's not feasible. I think we need to work in collaboration, as I talked about earlier. The City Commission can work with the Chamber, they can work with the county, the airport authority, and we can, we need workers, as I talked about earlier. So we need to have meetings with those people. We need to discuss what they're looking for. We need to figure out where we can find those individuals. Maybe through the conversations, the local employers find out they're going to have to raise their wages in order to keep their employees or to bring new ones in. Legislatively, we cannot dictate that, but I think we can lead the discussion and hopefully lead us in that direction.
Aaron?
Well, I think it's interesting also, when we were setting up the EEO, members of the Chamber of Commerce were asked about what kind of people should make up the board. And we brought up the fact that we would like to see workers maybe be related onto the board, not just CEOs, the same old band of brothers that are always up there. I might add, mostly men, mostly white. And they didn't like that idea. They thought there was no reason to have a worker. What could they possibly contribute? So I think we can have an influence on what happens. It's called competition. We can stop keeping businesses out of Salina, we can start bringing them in. I bet you'd pay your employees a lot more if there was another title coming to move, the next door was offering more money. I bet you would. And that's how you do it. It helps the, it helps the consumer, because of competition, you bring the prices down, it helps the workers, you just get the best workers. You're going to pay a living wage for a change in this town, and we need that desperately.
Tracy?
Traditional response would be a trading, there's professional organizations that benefit, probably educate people. There's no reason why they can't start their own businesses. That's the competition you need.
Owen?
Again, I think we need to look at this in a balanced way. I, of course, promote the livable wages. And poverty is an issue across the board in all communities. But on the other hand, Salina is not as expensive to live in as other places, and the wages are basically the same. I've been a business owner in Kansas, and I don't think people got paid differently for their jobs than they do in Wichita, Kansas City, Topeka, Goodland. It's all been very similar. However, the cost of living is very, very different. So if I'm going to live in Kansas City versus Salina, I'm going to have a lot more trouble living on a lower wage. So we need to put into respecting, but we also need to continue to strive to have people that step out to the front and lift wages like Schwanz. But again, it's hard to do that in our current business climate.
Frank?
Yeah, I think Mike made a good point. But I would say that going back to just what Owen said, with Schwanz, and I brought it up earlier, in late June, when they came out with their announcement, five million in payroll. And, you know, that's affecting your employers with the unemployment rate being as low as it is. They are paying up the jobs. They are paying, you know, I ran into Tony, his place is going to be, he runs Martinelli's, he's going to, he's opening a new restaurant. And they're not paying minimum wage. You can't get, you can't get people to work the job with minimum wage. So it is, employers realize that they need to pay, they need to, they need to pay, and it's happening right now. But it's going to, it's a natural, organic process.
Joe?
So like I said earlier, we need jobs. We must promote an economic climate for Salina and Sling County that attracts new businesses. With those new businesses and with better jobs, they're going to pay more. I don't think it's the city's, the commission's job to try to, you know, ask an employer to pay better wages. I do agree that we need to work with those employers, and we need to work to get, you know, the businesses, so the, you know, the current businesses you've got can expand and not fail. With that, you know, more sales, more money, better wages, higher wages.
Melissa?
When I was with Salina downtown, the Chamber of Commerce was partnering with Salina Tech to establish and really grow their welding program because we were critically short of welders. Industries needed welders, we didn't have enough welders, we thought the problem solved. The only problem with that is after meeting with Salina Tech staff a couple of weeks ago, we're seeing a huge talent drain. Our welders aren't staying in Salina. You know, I would agree that each job is worth a certain amount, like Mike Hoppett said. But the problem is, a welder in Salina is worth 14 to 17 dollars an hour, and a welder in Kansas City is worth 30 dollars an hour. I guess I would challenge anybody up here and say, would you stay here if your income were cut in half?
Okay. Thank you all. It's time for closing remarks. Reminder, you have one minute, and we'll start with Aaron.
Well, there you go. Is this on?
No.
There we go. Hey, really good questions from the audience. It shows that the audience is getting more aware of what is happening in Salina. This is, this is a turning point. I felt like the questions that we were asked by the general were very softball questions. They didn't want to talk about the economy. This entire election is about the economy. We fired the Chamber of Commerce because they were running a poor job. They're now running some candidates up here because they want to put things back the way they were. We're not going to allow that. We need to continue to push for more jobs, not just, look, there is not simple answers to complex questions. A couple of minutes of, hey, we need better jobs up here, hey, we need to fix our experience. Without a real solution, how to do that is just a waste of time. I have a record of doing the sorts of things, like firing the Chamber of Commerce, and what do you know? Getting higher wages out of Schwanz. And what I might point out, knowing one of the managers, they have a lot less turnover, and the lack of turnover is almost paying back that $5 million invested in it.
Tracy?
My mind's been wandering. It's been wandering because of the question about the mentally ill in Salina. But you have to realize, there's people that you just can't help, and they have to finally strive and conceive themselves. As such, now businesses, who's going to be the principal businesses, who's going to be the secondary business? Who's going to benefit from society? These are all questions that has, there's no answer for, you know? Who's going to benefit? Is a person who puts 12 years, 14 years, 16 years into education, or is it going to be a guy who's the son of a business owner? Who's it going to be? I have no answer for that.
Owen?
For three years, I've been totally immersed in the city of Salina's business. Between the two commissions and boards, it's very involved. It involves a lot of time and a lot of preparation. I have reviewed so many issues and so many topics. And there are so many things that have to come. And we're, like I said, looking at 20, 30 years down the road. So a lot of the decisions we made this year, you won't see for some time. Because we have to project that in the future, what Salina really needs. And I really feel like I do have a handle on that. And because of this extensive experience and partnership with the city and their staff and the City Commission, I can do this job. Most importantly, at this point, we need fiscal accountability appropriation and balance to run. And I want to move to the City Commission where I can be involved at the funding level rather than the planning level. But I'm going to let the city of Salina decide. If I need to be the visionary body, I'll stay there. Thank you.
Frank?
Thanks. Well, I appreciate you coming out tonight, and I appreciate your vote. I've been very involved in the community since moving back here 14 and a half years ago, after having grown up here a very long time ago. And been very involved, I've been to chair the Chamber, as was mentioned. I've chaired the Salina Education Foundation on two separate occasions. I've chaired the Salina Adult Day Center. I've been a board member of the Boy Scouts. I've been a board member with the Salina Arts Center. Been a board member of the Kansas Desert Tennis Association. I have been involved in the community. I really value this community and appreciate the vote.
Aaron?
I'd like to thank the leading women voters, the Chamber, the news media, and the folks who showed up tonight here. Given the chance, I can make a difference in Salina. This city has so much to give, rich in history and in its people, who have given so much to this city. On November 7, I hope to see my vision for Salina. Because with one vote at a time, we can make this happen. I won't take a knee for the National Anthem, and I won't take a knee when it comes to Salina. Thank you.
Melissa?
I'd like to echo that. Thank you all for being here tonight. And I'd also like to thank the viewers on Access Television who will be watching this at a later date. I'd also like to recognize and thank Mayor Kate Crawford and my fellow commissioners, John Blanchard, Dr. Trent Davis, and Carl Ryan, for welcoming me to the commission. And thanks to the citizens of Salina. It's been an honor to serve as one of your City Commissioners. It's my turn to give back to the community that has given my family and me so much. You have entrusted your lives to my husband. You've supported our son who has devastating illness. Every time you needed help of any kind on any project, you've been there for us again and again. So once more, I turn to you for support and ask for your vote on November 7. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you. I'd like to also thank everyone for being here. I would also like to thank the majority of the potential commissioners up here for their positive and the way that they handle themselves. I do want to say I'm somewhat offended by the fact that Mr. Housler stated that I am running on behalf of the Chamber. I am running for multiple reasons, and that is not one of them. I am a business owner in this community. I am entrenched in this community. I have two children who live here, two grandchildren. I want Salina to be a better place for them than it is for us. As we talk about incomes, and I've done, again, we can have discussions, I've looked, Sling County is in the top third of counties in Kansas as far as earnings. We can sit up here and we can build walls between the Salina, Chamber of Commerce, the city, the county, the airport authority. As we, as I opened up today, I believe we need to communicate, cooperate, and compromise if we're going to move forward. Building these walls and not building bridges is not going to move Salina forward. I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Let's give the candidates a hand.